Want more positivity in your life? Subscribe, turn on notifications, follow us and you know, all that techy stuff. We'd love to hear from you. Comment, share or give us a thumbs up. We are grateful to have you hanging out with us at Matt Logan speaks.
Welcome everybody back to the podcast. I have Craig Uglund. Did I get it right?
You did.
All right. Look at that. I've been practicing for 10 seconds.
Awesome.
Dude, thanks for being here. Yeah. Tell us, let's say this, you're running for city council in Rochester.
Yes.
Let's get that right out there. Why did you do that? And then as, give us the why first and then back up and tell us the how, how you got to where you're at with the why?
So why? Um, because I, I was always told if you're going to complain about something, uh, stop complaining and start doing. And I was just frustrated with the direction that I saw the city government going. You know, the, the pet projects, um, just the goofy ideas on transportation that are very niche market. And just the politicking and, um, and I wanted to kind of right the ship. And how it started was, um, last fall, the city and our, our ward six council person, um, put through the action to change Alton Hills Drive from a four lane to a two lane. And, um, we were kind of woken up by Senator Senjum to what was about to come down the pipeline. And a group of us got together and, uh, we just got community, community involvement. And we basically made the neighborhoods aware of what was coming down, coming down the road proverbial. And, um,
What I want to ask you about Alton Hills before you continue. Sorry. I'm really curious about that because I grew up in Rochester and, and so I'm very familiar. Why would they do that? What was that reasoning?
So their premise was safety, um, and to slow people down and, and claiming that Alton Hills is a very unsafe road. Well, from the get go, we had the accident statistics from the county. Um, and when the report came out, I went through that report with a fine tooth comb and you can make a report really go any direction you want. Put the data in to get what you want out.
Confirmation bias.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they
Confirm your bias. Yeah.
Yeah. And that's exactly what they did. They, they skewed the numbers. They used potential injury accidents as actual injury accidents, which was 10 to one. Well, of course that skews their numbers. So their justification of safety, was lame. And you know, they said, well, the people complained, well, there's nowhere for the kids to cross to get to school. Well, there's three schools on Alton Hills Drive. Hoover and Alton Hills Elementary both have crosswalks with stoplights in front of them.
Yeah.
And they have from the get go, the only school that doesn't is RCLS, which is, isn't really a neighborhood school. But there are kids that live on the south side of Alton Hills that have to cross there. And that's been a frustration is luckily this whole project was tabled. And they said, come back when we'll do some spot repairs on, on certain intersections that were legitimately dangerous. One of them being ninth avenue, and they haven't done a damn thing about it. So they talked the talk. They listened for once to the constituents, but then they haven't followed up on it.
Sure. Cause yeah, I've traveled Alton Hills a lot, so I understand how it works very well. Probably a lot of people listening and viewing that don't, but it's kind of a windy road, but it's a slow 30, what is it? 30 mile an hour? You know, and a neighborhood and like you say, a couple of schools, but I don't really see it being some, it's, there's enough traffic on there, but I don't see it being something that needs to be turned into two lanes because I think people are going to start trying to pass and, and intersections and that's kind of a weird, just from my experience with it, not knowing anything at all. It seems like a very interestingly weird idea.
It's a very unique road. It's, and the funny thing is some of the people that were for this, I don't know if they'd ever been on the road. They look at a map and they say, oh, it's, it's a curvy road that goes from A to B. But they don't realize how many hills are on that road. And yes, it's a, it's a wide road. So some of those areas people speed.
Yeah.
People speed everywhere.
Yes.
If you don't enforce it, you know, people are going to drive to the condition of the road. And that's part of the argument to do a road diet is if you can constrict the road, people will go slower. And I get that. And there's places where that should be done, but they don't take into account the hills coming off of 52 and the hills by Hoover and sightlines and whatnot, and how that can affect traffic. 113 or 115 driveways go onto Alton Hills Drive.
Yeah.
And yes, all the reports say that this is what you should do and that, but those reports are for straight roads with perfect sightlines.
Yeah.
They don't account for the hills and the topography of Alton Hills. And it wasn't an anti-bike thing whatsoever. I'm not anti-bicycle. There's a time and a place for bike lanes. Alton Hills wasn't that place for bike lanes. And we gave them alternative options that hindsight, they're like, well, crap, those were way better. They're shorter. They're, they're more direct. Cause one was shorter, um, more level. So you don't have all the hills and you don't have all the driveways dumping out onto them.
Yeah.
So, and I'm like, well, didn't you look at a map when you went through this to see, well, if I do go underneath a CC drive, I'm going to shave a half a mile off of my ride and, and three minutes.
Right.
So just that common sense or lack thereof on some of these projects. And there's more coming down the pipeline where all the reports and the handbook say, well, this is what should be done there. But they don't take into account other neighborhood factors. And I'm thinking specifically like the East Center Street and 11th Avenue. They want to put a roundabout there because the lights are to the end of their lifespan. And they have to put new lights in, which would be more expensive than a roundabout, which to me seems asinine. But there's a boys and girls club on the corner, the intersection and roundabouts are not safe for pedestrians to cross.
For sure not.
So because the driver is looking for other cars, they're not looking for a kid walking across the road.
Yeah.
50 feet past.
Sightline issue again there too with roundabouts. So you can't really go around and see the sights because they're
You're looking everywhere. You're not just looking ahead into the sides.
Exactly.
Anyway.
Interesting. All right. So, um,
That was a very quick dirt road at the beginning.
Yeah, right. That's okay. That's what it's about. It's a podcast. We're supposed to have conversations. Uh, so go back to, you know, so you decided that your why was powerful enough to get to your how?
Yeah. Um, and the funny thing is my wife and I, I remember last spring, we had a conversation and I don't know what spurred it of, if I ever ran for city council, I'd have to drop a lot of other volunteer stuff that I do because I don't have so much time.
Right.
And I specifically remember that conversation, why we had it, I have no idea. So it's, you know, once the Alton Hills Drive road diet fight started, it kind of started some gears moving in my head of maybe this is a possibility.
Yeah.
And then at the end of all that was the, the salary increase and how that happened. And people can say it was transparent until they're blue in the face, but it's absolutely not true. It was done at the last minute on new business and they tried to push it through in two weeks. And luckily, community input and outrage pushed it back to, I think of like a six week process, but that was still pushed through. And it's, I'm not running because of a road diet and I'm not running because of salaries. Those two things opened eyes to, to really what's going on in the city. And it's just, they're not listening to the constituents. They're, they're running head down towards their pet projects to get what they want done, not listening to the community. And I think that's huge.
That is huge. And actually, let me ask you this question. I've heard a little bit about consultants coming in. The city's paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $40 million for consultants. And, and we're not talking in 20 or 30 years. We're talking in a very short period of time.
Five years.
Okay.
$40 million, five years.
Yeah.
And part of
As a taxpayer, not in Rochester, but as a taxpayer, that would be alarming to me for consultants.
So the DM, and we can go into DMC later if you want, part of Rochester obligation for DMC. My understanding is that Rochester is responsible for the consulting aspect of the entire DMC project. Okay. That's, we have to spend 129 million dollars to get Rochester needs to spend 129 million ish to get back. That's our obligation to get our 595 million dollars back from the state. So we have to spend the money somewhere, but $40 million on consultants for a ton of reports that don't hold weight. They're nice ideas and pretty pictures and they're guidelines, but they're guidelines. They're not cut in stone. And of that $40 million, how much of that was used contracted with local consultants? A lot of those, a lot of those consultants were outside of Rochester or outside of Minnesota. And I understand you need to, to get the experts in the specific project you're doing. But an out of state contractor or consultant doesn't know Rochester. And what works in Portland or Seattle or San Francisco, isn't going to work in Rochester. They have different climates. They have different businesses and, and traffic flows for, you know, shifts and stuff. And
No doubt the argument would be that they take that into consideration though. I mean, I'm sure that they would say, you know, well, Craig, we take the climate difference into consideration as a consultant and as, you know, some of those kinds of things, but I'm, I'm with you. I, I, I don't know the ins and outs of it. And, but it was, it piqued my interest.
And that's $40 million that didn't get rolled back into the local economy. And that's the frustrating part.
Yeah, yeah.
Same with hiring local contractors, giving them some type of preferential treatment. Because most of that money is going to stay in the community. When you're hiring contractors out of the cities or out of other states, that money is gone. It doesn't come back through our economy.
Right.
And that's, it's, it's a poor use of funds.
Yeah.
So.
That, um, as a, what has been inspiring to me is I've been, so this year with the way everything has gone crazy. Yeah. Go ahead, get a drink. Camera's on me anyway, right now, Craig. So.
I got a face for radio.
Yeah, yeah. So what, uh, for me, this year has been the year that I've really looked at politics and things like that. Like I never have before, simply because of what clearly is a disaster in politics almost everywhere. And the career politicians are fine if they're getting things done and pushing things through and some of that. But it's certainly something that, um, I've been trying to listen to someone's heart rather than, uh, just saying, oh, wait, he's a career politician. So throw him out or her out or whatever. Some of the career politicians and things that I've been looking at, they haven't done a whole lot, right? And, and, um, it, it's, so it's been very, very interesting to me, but what's been inspiring to me is hearing someone like yourself, their heart. And that you're pushing against the political status quo. Just in this conversation and we need to have more of that because there's so many things that you can't dance around. Uh, asking the questions of why was $40 million spent outside of our economy? Sure. Some of that probably would need to be spent that way. I get it. That's clearly that would be the case, but why was, was all of it spent outside of our economy? There's some pretty, um, intelligent people in, in our area that I would think could handle some of the different things. And yeah, so, so that's, I'm, I'm happy to hear that from you, uh, that's pushing back on some of those things. What does that do to you personally? And then what does that do to you professionally? What I mean by that is this, do you personally sit back and say, okay, wait a minute, this is going to affect me personally? And I'm, I'm concerned about it. And then from a professional standpoint in cancel culture, is that something that's a concern?
Personally, it affects everybody that lives in Rochester.
Yeah.
You know, I, I was born and raised on Alton Hills Drive. Um, I, I went to Alton Hills, John Adams, John Marshall. I left town for about six years, two years of college, two years of working in downtown Minneapolis and two years of working in Western Colorado, the opposite ends of the spectrum. And I, I came back to Rochester, um, you know, it's where my family is, where my friends are. And, and I ended up, we're a mile and a half from the house I grew up in.
Yeah.
Just because we love the neighborhood. And I think anything that our, that our local government does affects us. And as far as like voting wise, your vote for your local officials has a much bigger impact on your life than your vote for national politicians.
Completely agree.
Yeah, that's big picture stuff, but your day to day is affected by your local officials. And that's why it's so important to listen to the forums and, and read through the jargon and, and find who's competent for the job and who has the leadership skills professionally. There's two, two sides to that.
Yeah.
You know, um, some folks had, had talked to me back in January about running and they said, oh my God, this would be great for your business because you'll get name recognition and, and yeah, I'll get name recognition, but I'll also piss off half the people.
You're right. You'll also get name recognition.
Because of people not agreeing with what I do. And that's why I think it's important to, to be very open on why you made decisions. And you really need to take account into account what the neighborhoods want. You know, yes, data and reports are important and science is important, but so is what your constituents want because who's your boss? Your constituents. Um, and God forbid we use some common sense on some decisions. You know, that's, it's lacking and the excuse of, well, the data says this and the data says that, well, data in, data out, you can make the results say whatever you want by what you put into it.
Yeah.
So you have to take that with a grain of salt, you know, science is science. I get that, but you need to use some common sense too. So.
Why? Okay. So we see on a national level, um, that there's so much, that, you know, Trump's a polarizing figure. He's very
To say the least.
Right. He's very polarizing. Like him or hate him, whatever. He's, he's polarizing. He knows what he wants to go after and he goes after it. He doesn't let anybody slow him down or anything like that. Again, good batter in between. You look at the policy end of it, versus him and, and Biden is running mate and you, you go down the notes and you remove their names altogether. I mean, it's pretty remarkably different. Are people looking at that on a local level? And what I mean by that is, 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 are, are they looking for unification? Or are they, are they sucked into that polarizing, um, political nonsense? From a local standpoint, again.
Great question. And I think
What have you seen? I mean,
So in my race, um, now in general Rochester, there's, there's groups that are trying to politicize it. They want our city council to be political. They want a D or an R or an I behind everybody's name. And that's not how it should be. Look at what happens on our national scene. If you put a D or an R behind somebody, that gets in the way of getting anything done. And they lose focus on their jobs because they're doing what their party wants them to do. And it would be horrible for that to happen to Rochester. The, our elected officials need to do what they're elected for, not to work for their next election. So I've been very specific that, that I, I don't belong to a party and I'm not playing party politics. Are there things that I agree with for the Republicans? Yep. And there's things that I disagree with and the same for the Democrats. There's, there's goods and bads on both sides and the extreme 10% here and the extreme 10% here. That seems like that's all that's being spoken for. What about the 80% in the middle that don't have a voice? And that's the voice I'm trying to be as moderate that looks at all angles of everything and just uses their head on decisions. And I know, um, you know, well, I've been painted out to be this monster and this Trumper and da, 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 which is a bunch of crap.
Well, who cares if you vote for Trump and you publicize that? I mean, so I, what makes me really, really, really scared is that people are saying, um, you know, there's a, there's a hashtag like anyone but rump or something like that, hashtag 2020, you know, any, anybody, anyone but rump or something like that, you know, obviously Trump.
Yeah.
And it's like, wait a minute, how scary is that? Like to me, okay, you don't like Trump. Sure. That's okay. I don't, that's fine.
It's your personal decision.
But if you're saying anybody but, what are you looking at? What are you focusing at? You're not looking at what policies have been made. I mean, you're not looking at any of those kinds of things that, that take place, uh, behind the scenes. You just don't like his personality.
Right.
Who cares what his personality is? Who cares what Biden's personality is? What do you get done?
Right. What have you done in 50 years?
Right. So
Or what have you done in four years?
Exactly. And so when you're, when you're, um, trying to dump someone's pile of crap to stand up and elevate yourself, I'm kind of out in that place.
You've lost.
Like if, yes, uh, something came in the mail just yesterday. Well, my phone for one, I told you about that earlier this week, but when we were trying to get a schedule together, um, but my phone came in the mail yesterday, but also, uh, a flyer. And on that flyer, you know, they were, they were specifically knocking their opponent to try and elevate themselves. I will not, I don't care what party you're for, I'm not going to ever vote for you.
Nope.
Period.
And that's been
If you're doing that, it's been terrible.
Yeah.
I mean, I've never seen it this bad. I've seen it obviously before, but this bad, they're doing
Every day from the same candidate.
Yeah. And they're tearing their opponent down to try and elevate. No, tell me what makes you you. Tell me why I should vote for you, not why I shouldn't vote for the other guy or girl.
Exactly.
Wow.
What are you going to do for me?
Yeah. Focus people. Why are you listening to the garbage piece of it? We all have garbage, unfortunately, but where's our heart? Where, what's our intent? What has been accomplished? All those things.
What qualifies you to do the job?
Yes. So what? What has frustrated you? What has been inspiring to you in that process? Because I'm, I'm assuming that's happening.
Oh yeah. So what? I've got some frustrations, but first the positives. Um, so my opponent, um, Molly Dennis, she, she's a very kind person. She's very passionate about her, her, um, platform. You know, she's into the, she's very conscious of the social justice and the education, which the social justice is important. It's a hot button right now. And I think things do need to be, um, improved. Education, absolutely. It's important, but that's kind of a school board thing. Um, the environment, yes, we need to be conscious of our environment. But again, not specifically a city council thing, but a dirt road on that is our city is going to detach, going to separate its relationship with the county. Right now we get our steam for our city council or city hall, library, Mayo Civic Center from the waste of energy facility, the incinerator.
Right.
That burns our garbage.
Yeah.
That keeps out the landfills.
Yeah.
Well, they have to put in a new condensate line. That's going to cost millions of dollars from downtown to the incinerator. So the city said, no, we're going to back away. They just decommissioned the RPU plant. But now they want to put in a steam generator that's run on natural gas. That's not friendly for the environment. It's like
Not as friendly.
Not as friendly. And it's like, natural gas is dirt cheap right now because we, it's, it's a byproduct of fracking.
Yeah.
But if, if the national scene changes and they want to eliminate fracking, what do you think is going to happen with the price of natural gas?
Exactly. Yeah.
It's asinine.
Yeah.
So I'll get off my soapbox on that, but all those things are important, but they're not what you do when you run the city. To me, running the city is public safety, public works, parks and trails and economic development. And that's what we need to focus on for our city council. That's what they do. Our county does social work. Our county does, you know, their, um, the, the legal system downtown with the courts. Of course, the sheriff's department, all that stuff, but they handle the social services. They should be the ones taking the lead on our homeless, not the city council. The city council needs to support them on what they do. And they need to support the city council on what the city does. But we're getting too many cooks in the kitchen on some of this stuff. So anyway, um, I think Molly has a very, very kind heart. And she's very passionate about what she does. But I think her focus may be a little, um, off to the side. And we've run
So what I, what I
Fairly clean campaign so far, but she's been getting a little pointed the last few weeks. I don't know. I don't know why. I don't know. She's being directed by somebody else. I think she may be, but
I want to, I want to pause you out just real quick. So what I kind of hear you say is, is that she, um, maybe is looking at, um, uh, looking at pic, pictures outside of like the, the area that we should be looking at for Rochester as a city council. Is that what you're saying? Like looking bigger, a little bit bigger picture that others should deal with? Is that?
She's hitting all the buzzword items, the, you know, and, and I, I give her a little bit of grief when I, I say, I'm not about platitudes. I'm about answers.
Yeah.
Cause she, she repeats the same things over and over and over. And it's the social justice and all those things that are important. Yeah, but, but running the city doesn't affect those things.
Yeah. 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 I see what you're saying. Okay. Just wanted to.
Yeah. So, um, and, and does she have a place in politics? Maybe, but I don't know if that's the city council. Um, she's super passionate and maybe she should be on the diversity council or something like that, because she really is focused on that and the LGBTQA community. But, um, where I, you know, with the Alton Hills thing, with transportation and fiscal responsibility, going through the budgets and, and comprehending what's in the budgets, this, I've never heard the city talk about that natural gas steam generator. I saw in the budget.
Ooh.
$10 million.
Yeah.
For a steam generator, like, and, or we could just chip in our share to the county to put in a new condensation line. And then continue to use their facility at their expense to maintain it.
Right.
Why? Why do we want to do our own thing when we can let them do? Yes. And it, the city needs to get away from doing everything and they need to support the groups that do it, like the homeless. Whenever the government touches something, the cost goes through the roof and the quality at the end isn't necessarily there. But for our homeless, if we support Catholic charities and the landings and all those groups that can make a dollar into $4 and use volunteers.
Yeah.
That's a heck of a lot more efficient with our money than to have the city and the county do the shelters and stuff. Let those groups do that stuff.
Yeah. I would agree with that fiscally. Uh, I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Responsible with their money.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So taxes are high enough.
Oh my God. Yes.
In, in my opinion, but, uh, and maybe I shouldn't say it like that. Maybe taxes aren't high enough. Maybe it is, you know, these types of issues that are, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. The money isn't being used just real wisely. And I'm talking about a local level, federal level, all of it. Just there's a lot of, there's a lot of, wow. Screen door on a submarine, you know, and
And they're trying to get, they're trying to squeeze every penny they can out of every resource they can. They're wanting to do street light fees. They're wanting to do natural gas franchise fees. They're looking at every source they can to get every penny out of us. Instead of trying to get more money out of us, why don't you use the money you have more wisely?
Yes, exactly.
You know, the Alton Hills Drive Bridge reconstruction, that's going to be four years before it's done. When they rebuilt the I-35 bridge over a river in 417 or 18 days.
Yeah.
Demolition, engineering and rebuild, an eight lane interstate over a river in 418 days.
Yeah.
The guardrails on that, the ornamental rails are over $150,000 budgeted. For a bridge, like you go up 41st street and 37th street, they got chain link fence.
Exactly.
Which it isn't the most beautiful thing in the world, but $150,000 for ornamental rails.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just asinine, especially with
Well, we, we should spend stuff like that on parks, you know, and make the parks better.
People can enjoy, not just drive past.
Exactly. Yeah. I, I agree. What, uh, you, you kind of started, uh, before I interrupted you, you started talking about some frustrations in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah. Well, um, there's been some mudslinging and it actually started in June. Um, and I've, I've just ignored it, you know, it's the, the person that's, the people that are doing it. You know, they're, they have their opinions and they're entitled to it, but what they're saying isn't true. And they're, they're specifically taking screenshots out of context to, to paint a portrait. That isn't true. Making me out to be a homophobe and a transphobe and, you know, a fake veteran, which is completely bullshit. And the thing that sucks is it's that whole cancel culture. If they say it and repeat it and it gets shared enough, well, then it becomes true.
Yeah.
And it's not. Um, and we had a
Have you, I want to, have you heard of Joe Rogan? I'm, I'm assuming. Did you know that he's trying to get canceled or they're trying to cancel him?
I'm not surprised.
But he's one of the most like open minded people as far as at his, at his, uh, level of, of popularity. He's one of the most open people in the trans community are going after him. And then the employees at Spotify and stuff like that now are going after him. And I'm like, Joe Rogan? This guy has one of the most open minds you can have.
Right.
Like he, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't slam anybody. He doesn't cancel anybody. He doesn't have a problem with anybody. You know, he's a comedian. Of course he probably has some bad jokes and, and you're going to, right? You're going to, uh, push back on that. Okay. But really? And so that's where I get like very interested in that cancel culture. And I've been tearing that apart a little bit more in recent weeks. When I heard that about Joe Rogan, I'm like, not Joe Rogan, you know, I mean,
And it's frustrating because the, it, it, and this is a general statement, the people that seem to be it, it, and this is a general statement, the people that seem to be pushing that are the ones that, you know, everything is happy. They want everybody to accept everything as long as you agree with them. But if you don't agree with them, well, then they're going to cancel you.
Here, here's the problem with that. You can't agree with them and, and I don't mean like, uh, the trans community or any of it, but them. Meaning they're continually changing the, uh, the rules.
Yes.
They're always changing the rules. So you don't, from one minute, um, to the next minute, literally the rules have changed. I mean, there was a word just in, in the, uh, Supreme Court hearings for Amy, whatever her name is.
ACB.
Yeah. ACB.
Yeah.
Well, ACB, Amy something Barrett or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever. But you know, they literally, she gave an answer, um, and the reply back from whatever senator it was, was is like, well, you can't use that term anymore. And like, it was like five minutes ago, you could basically, literally like within, within hours, the, the online, um, Webster's dictionary went on and changed it after that was said in that hearing, literally.
Seriously.
Yeah, literally that, you know, so that's the whole thing. And I just wanted to add that in there because you can't tell me-
You're moving the field goal.
Exactly. You're, you're, exactly. You're moving it all the time. You can't move it. I get it if you want to think that way and have those rules. Okay, that's, that's great, but you can't change them on me. Then I don't know what I'm doing with, uh, uh, how can we have a relationship if you keep changing the rules?
Absolutely.
So go, go ahead.
Well, no, and it's-
Because I think that's important to add in there.
It is. Um, and I agree to disagree. If, it's okay to not have the same beliefs with other people. That's fine. Everybody has the right to believe what they want and, and support who they want to support. And that's America. But don't berate somebody or don't trash somebody because they don't have the same beliefs that you do. Politics in general, especially our national politics have completely divided our country. If you don't like who I like, well, then you're a POS.
Yeah.
What about, okay, we'll agree to disagree. We're not going to talk about politics anymore and we're still going to be friends. Like grow up. Agree to disagree and move on with your life. Politics is not the center of our earth.
No.
It's just, people need to back off on that stuff. And I think a lot of us in mainstream media, a ton of it is social media.
Have you seen The Social Dilemma?
Yes.
Did a podcast on that with somebody and we, we-
Was that with Nick?
No.
Okay.
Um, a guy by the name of Corey. And yeah, we really kind of tore it apart and talked about it at length. I, I, I mean, I think we talked about it for like an hour and a half or something like that. And, and, and Cuties, um, also on Netflix, just, just took it apart and, and, and things. And while Cuties was not done appropriately at all, the meaning behind it and what they were trying to discuss was, was actually pretty legitimate. Um, they did it in a very, 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 very disgusting and poor way.
Yeah. I haven't watched it. I heard it should have been done as a documentary, not as a movie.
Yeah, exactly.
A little more critical thinking.
Exactly. Yep. Um, but it was done in Europe and things, I think France, if I remember correctly. And so, yeah, but I digress. Um, but yeah, cause social media is what you said. So I agree. It's, uh, something in the last few days, I haven't looked at it yet. In fact, I got an email from somebody just this morning that sent me the link. But apparently, um, they have, um, uh, Project Veritos or something like that. I don't know if you've heard of them, but I haven't looked them up, but apparently they have video, uh, of a big, high executive of Google literally saying that, um, they, they are manipulating the outcome of this election. Like they're, they're steering people in, in a direction when they're doing different searches and ads and stuff like that. Like literally that's come out in the last couple of days from when we're recording this.
Yeah. And it, it, it doesn't surprise me. Um,
It's scary.
And my God, it's so scary that they have that much influence, but especially after watching social-
Dilemma.
Dilemma. Um, how much they can direct you on, on what you think, because you think of what you see. You know, people that watch CNN are going to believe CNN and, and have talking points for there. And people that watch Fox and only Fox are going to just think that that's the truth. And it's, people need to, um, kind of look at the bigger picture and look at multiple news sources and get away from the mainstream media and maybe look at the BBC or some of the other international shows that don't have that bias. And I just wish that our media could get back to reporting the news. And I mean, everything now is a, it's a show. It's not a, it's not a news report.
Yeah. It's entertainment.
It's entertainment and it's, can we just get back to having some decent news?
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to get that for sure.
It is.
Let's, let's wrap up. What, uh, how do you want to wrap up? Tell us, tell us what, I'm going to give it to you. Floor is yours. Floor is yours.
As far, as far as my race, you know, like I said, I think we've both run a pretty clean race. I just, my hope is that people take the time, the people that haven't voted, that haven't voted, take the time and watch the forums and, and pay attention on who's giving answers and who's just saying the buzzwords. Um, I think that I've been pretty clear on, on giving answers on, on projects and, and platform issues that need to be addressed and not just talking buzzwords. I hope people take that into account. I hope people get away from the politicking and, and I know that, um, I've been very careful about not pigeonholing myself. And I've got yard signs in front of Biden signs and I've got yard signs in front of Trump signs and I've got yard signs all on their own. Uh, just do some critical thinking and do some research on who do you want to represent Rochester on the city council? Who, who will be able to have constructive conversations? Who will be able to add to the conversation? Who knows the city government and the city projects and, and has the ability to comprehend all that stuff and who's prepared and who's on time? And, uh, just do your research and, and I've been very open, you know, I haven't been able to doorknock. Number one, COVID, people are scared about, of it. Number two, I have a disability and I can't doorknock. I physically can't do it. But I've been very open for people to reach out to me. Um, you know, I've met people with the driveways. I've taken phone calls and I answer emails as fast as I can, you know, usually within a few hours, um, to talk to people. Um, it's a weird year for campaigning for sure. Um, but just do your research, man. Get rid of the politicking and just do what you think is best for the community.
Craig, thanks for being open. Thanks for being honest and transparent. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me on.
Yeah, hopefully you'll come back again.
I'd love to.
Awesome. See you next time.